Once again, and I am Mike Scholar. This is Nuance, of course, joined as always by Jay Carter, also known as Timid, the hip hop artist and the chair of BLM Tokyo. What's going on, Jay?
Just, just negative this week.
Negative?
Looking forward, you know, I'm on the job hunt, looking for a new contract. And I applied for, for a place through the, through a job board. And you can apply right there. You know how you have your, your resume and do your cover letter, all that stuff. And so you send it to the company. Then I get a message the next day from that company on the job board saying, oh, invite you to apply on our website. So then you go to their website and you, you send them the exact same material, the resume. And I just copy and paste the exact cover letter that I sent them prior. You already have this information. I send that to them. And then later that day, the same day, I get an email from them saying, oh, we'd like to invite you to, uh, take part in our, uh, first step in our interview process. This is our recruitment process. Please send us a three minute, uh, video submission. Of an introduction, answering these questions. Like what the heck?
And they're the same question that you asked before?
Well, they're gonna be the same questions that'll be in the interview once you finally get to a face to face interview. It's just like, I mean, and I know video submissions are starting to become more of a thing, uh, in recruitment process, but it's just like making people jump through hoops. It's off putting, it's disrespectful in my opinion, it's lazy. Uh, it's just,
Video submissions are off putting?
Yeah. Like, why, why should I, why should, I haven't even talked to anybody yet. Why should I send you a three minute video introducing myself, talking about my background, what it is I want to do at this job? Uh, you know, and a fun fact about myself, like how stupid is that? Like, this is supposed to be part of the interview when we talk, when we sit down and actually talk. Like if your interviewer, can't glean that information in a face to face interview, then they're not the right person to be doing the interviews.
Right, right. And it shows that, they're, I don't know if they're per se lazy, right? But I think it is a lazy thing to do because, normally you would at least give someone the respect of giving them the interview. And if they're gonna give you the interview, then you'll sit down with them and happily have those discussions. But now, under this model, it's like, you know, they can ask for a thousand video submissions and there's no, filter that you're detecting there, right? And so it doesn't seem like, they're giving you any hope or any, any, anything on their side that shows that they're serious about you, right? They're asking you to jump through these hoops, but they're not giving up what they normally would when they would schedule you for an actual interview.
Right, you know, it's, and it's, it's like a cattle type of maneuver, right? I know a lot of positions get like, especially these days, get like hundreds of applications and they try to whittle them down. That's why they put them through, these, um, ATS systems that try to automatically using, uh, machine learning pull out, what they think is appropriate. And then they look at that batch to, to go through to see if they're gonna do interviews. Um, but they're adding, some places are adding more stuff like this video. So, I don't know, how, however many people are added, if you're not gonna look at all the resumes, you're sure not gonna look at all the videos that are three minutes long. Like, you're just making people do stuff just for the sake of doing stuff, you know, it's like, it's ridiculous.
Right, right. I can see that. It's funny, technology always has its pros and cons, right? On the one hand, it's nice that we can do all these things in a more convenient fashion and we're able to even do something like this if we wanted to. But on the other hand, it, it does feel like you put it off putting, because they're not giving the time of day to you necessarily. They, you know, that they're just telling you to do all these things for them, but you don't even know if they're gonna look at them. I dealt with something similar in, the campaigns that we did prior to COVID and the Zoom era, right? All of the endorsement interviews would be in person. Normally, if you went there, it meant something. It didn't mean you were gonna get an endorsement, obviously, but if they were scheduling you for an interview, they took, they took the time, to schedule you for an interview. It kinda sent a signal that they were serious enough about you, or you were in enough consideration, to be asked to travel to their office, take time out of your busy campaign schedule and sit down with them, right? It meant a little something to have that personal invite. And they wouldn't invite, uh, everyone. And not every group felt they could invite all the candidates, because the candidates would not be able to travel to every group's office all around the city or the state or whatever. And so it was a more selective kind of process. Fast forward to twenty twenty one, coming out of the COVID, really still in the COVID era, still very much in a Zoom era, wanted to do Zoom interviews. But what that meant was, on the one hand, it was more convenient, right? The candidates could sit at home and do thirty of them in a day or whatever. But what it meant was, every little group expected you to get on there and do a Zoom interview. And really, you would be spending all of your time doing Zoom interviews if you took all of them, because there were just so many, right? A lot of these small groups wouldn't invite all the candidates to come sit with them, because they knew that the candidates had to prioritize. And, you know, you know, it was more of a serious type thing. It became, I think, devalued in the Zoom era, where it was just an expectation. What's the big deal? You're getting on Zoom for a few minutes, right? But when a thousand people are asking you to do this now, all you're doing is zooming. Um, it is a little off putting at times.
Well, imagine if, saying you're trying to get that endorsement, um, and, prior to the, the, the Zoom interview or prior to the actual interview where you sit down with them, they were like, here, we have five questions. Send us a video submission of you answering those questions and then we'll consider doing a video in, uh, an actual interview with you. Like, you'd be like, what? Like,
Yeah, some do things kinda like that, although I don't know if I've seen the video essay format. I've gotten that from a few places, that wanted to show it. Maybe they have a Facebook group and, you know, do, do a little video, we'll put it on our Facebook or, or, you know, show it to our members. That's not as common as the questionnaire though. And that's the whole thing, right? Cause some of these questionnaires are very indulgent, I guess. You know, no problem with a questionnaire from any group where they're asking you where you stand on their core issues and, multiple choice, yes, no, click a box, you know, whatever, fine. But when they start getting into, you know, here's two hundred and fifty questions, we want them in essay format. And it's like, I mean, are we spending the entire campaign seeking your endorsement or are we acknowledging there are other things out there too?
Right, absolutely. And then the question then becomes one of privacy. Like, what are you doing with this submission, this video? Like, who's viewing it? How are you storing it? And are you gonna delete it if, if, you know, the person's not chosen for the position? What's, what's happening there? You know, I mean, we've seen, video submissions pop up on the internet, you know, people that had applied for some job long ago. And, you know, I mean, they made a ridiculous video submission, but they end up on the internet for memes and whatnot, like, you know, I need to know that type of stuff, especially these days.
Right, right. Yeah, it's funny. I think I saw someone beefing about cover letters recently, saying, these companies are still asking me to do a cover letter. It's twenty twenty three, I'm not doing no cover letter, you know? Is very pretentious too, right? They want you to say things, I think, at least historically, this cover letter deal has been set up where, it seems like they're looking for things that are not genuine. They want you to say like, you know, I don't know, I think this will be a great opportunity for me for all these great, and it's like, you're just kind of telling them what you think they want to hear, not really why you're looking for that job.
Right, I, I, I agree. Um, it's just, yeah, maybe that's why I don't get a lot of, uh, callbacks, is half the time I don't send a cover letter.
Yeah, I think,
Yeah, I think it's ridiculous. Like, you've got, you've got my resume.
Right.
You've got my resume and you're getting a feel for me, like it would be the interview part, right? Like, the cover letter is not gonna really tell you much, um, on there. I mean, I guess you could say some other things and give a, you know, a little bit of a personality and to put that into it, but, I don't know, I just,
A little bit, but it seems like they want the generic for the most part. You can deviate maybe a little bit, show some quirks about you, but, I think everyone in the cover letter is basically saying the same thing, right? They're saying these things that they think you're supposed to say in a cover letter, so it is kinda silly.
Right, and that's what people are gonna do. They're gonna just, you know, put whatever in it just to, you know.
No, yeah, you'd say this is the kind of opportunity you've been looking for. It's, it sounds like a challenging thing. It's like, you know, there are certain buzzwords and phrases that, you're told to use or you see other people using and you just do it.
Yeah, exactly. So, so, uh, you know, HR and hiring people and people with their recruitment processes, stop waterboarding candidates. It's ridiculous.
Yeah. That reminds me of the process of renting an apartment. We talked about that on here once.
Right.
Things that they're asking. It's crazy, it's crazy. I just wanna take out my checkbook and say, here's the money for a year. Stop hounding me. Stop trying to get all my information. I'll just pay you upfront. How about that? But they don't want that. They wanna get all your information to get, for some reason, it seems like that's a more popular model, the month to month thing. I don't know why.
Right? It's, it's, it's ridiculous.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know, people, it's, I think you hit it on the head a little bit with the word pretentious.
Right, right.
It's just so much pretentious stuff these days. You know, I just, I don't know.
Yeah, but that's also part of why I was never really cut out to be an employee.
No, you never were.
I just find the whole workplace culture in the US at least to be pretentious. I don't know if other people are just tolerating it, or some others just aren't seeing what I'm seeing, but I always feel like there's a level of psychological, warfare or dominance at play, even if it's subtle, right? Might not be over. Maybe cause today we call them microaggressions, I don't know, but there's always something in it where it's like, they just, they want you to feel like you're inferior to them because they're paying you. I never liked that. Right. Something that I'm self-conscious about now, that I've got people, I pay and I'm, I'm very happy that I'm able to help give people jobs, work. But I never wanted to be looked at as that kind of boss, right? That other, that I would see in other people. Or, or I never wanted to be looked at as being part of that pretentious workplace culture that I found myself.
Right, no, you, really, if you hadn't become a lawyer and, and done your own thing, I don't, I don't know how you would have, would have made it through, cause you, yeah, you definitely weren't interested in that typical workplace type of thing, like, cause you're like, look, if I can get the job done, like, what does the rest of this mean? It's like, why are you basically, forcing me to do stuff when I've already done what you need, you know what I mean? Like, it didn't, it doesn't make sense. And I completely agree with you on it. So, yeah. I don't know, what would you have done if you didn't have gone, hadn't gone to law school?
Well, I don't know. I would have continued to focus on music. I know that. Not something that I've been thinking about lately, that I kind of, allow the music to take a backseat, cause who knows where that would have gone, you know? Yeah, I always intended to do both, right? Music and the law, but it just took, and then because I got into politics also, it forced me to not focus on the music as much. And, you know, now I'm trying to put something out for the first time in a while. You know, cause I always wanted to get back to it. So, I don't know, you know, I don't know. I, I think though, whatever it was, it would have been entrepreneurial in some way. I think it, one of my own things, you know, ma- maybe do multiple things.
Right, yeah, I think, you know, I, I was thinking about that, the same thing, um, recently, because I've, uh, you know, I still am in contact with some people in the music stuff and, um, you know, I see that they're still doing it as their, as a primary thing and just like, you know, I think we, kind of put it in the backseat a little bit more, probably starting with the first campaign.
Yeah.
We're like, yeah, like, we're gonna put, put in efforts to make this happen. And I think that's kinda when we kinda step back a little bit from.
Well, even for me, law school, I know, I know you were still doing, I think, more music when I was in law school, but for me, you know, it just was so, not overwhelming, but just time consuming, right?
Right.
Where I couldn't, and even during, I mean, we did the Inferno video while I was still in law school. I was still trying to do things. I think I put out some mixtape stuff and I was still trying to do things. And I would get upset when people would assume that I was no longer gonna do music because I was in law school. So the whole reason why I'm going to law school is to try to change people's perceptions of what is possible. I, I wanna do both. But it is a, a matter of time. I mean, it really is, especially if you start getting into politics of, you know, imagine, and, and now to this day, I still struggle with that. Being a lawyer, being in politics and trying to do music at the same time. It's not easy. You have to, prioritize and make time for each. I gotta say, you know, maybe for these next few months, I'm gonna focus more on this one and the others gotta take a backseat.
Right, yeah. And you know, at that same time, when you were in law school, I was also in school at the time.
Forgot about that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was trying to, I was trying to, balance it out as well. Um, I think over the years, I've probably, done a little bit more bits than you have. Um, but, not as much time and effort into it as prior.
Right, right. But I do look at it like, I'm in a position in life now where, I can do better with my music than I was able to even back then. And so that's actually exciting. I've got more connections. It's funny how that works. Getting involved in politics in Queens and New York City, you also get connections to hip hop people, people in the music industry, all kinds, all kinds of people, right? And I know more, and I've got more resources now and I have more experience, all these different things, life. And so I actually feel like, for my music, I'm in the best spot I've ever been in, even though I haven't been focusing on it for a while.
Yeah, no, and that's good, that's good. I think it's, I think part of that is being, uh, displayed in, in, the process that you're doing, um, with this new upcoming album too, so.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it. I've been in such a, such a recording and mixing and, you know, creative mode that, I haven't even been thinking actively about the promotion of it. And that's gonna be the next step, right? Putting it all out, getting it out there, like make sure people hear it. I haven't even really been focusing on that. I just wanna have the content ready. When I'm gonna be transitioning into that phase of it, to make sure that it gets heard, right? Cause you don't wanna put your all into something and then just have it go, and have no one hear it. It's like a tree falling in a forest, right? It's like, did it even fall? No one heard it, that kinda thing? So, let's get out there, cause I did put a lot of time into it and I'm proud of it.
Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, we've talked about the, the marketing issue. Things definitely different now. I think there are some more avenues that are opened up. Um, but it's, you know, these days, it's a, it's a content thing. You know, you've gotta put a lot of content together around this, uh, whatever it is you're releasing.
Yeah, yeah.
And be very concentrated in that effort, to, to get that out. So,
Right, well, that's why I'm trying to have things ready to go, not just different singles, but videos and, you know, thinking of the stories you wanna tell with the songs and the bios and the visual aids, all kinds of stuff.
Right, and people don't think about that a lot these days, you know, and we've had that conversation, as far as like the stories and, you know, singles. I just saw a post the other day where someone mentioned like, yeah, we went from like four to five minute songs down to like, you know, four to five minute songs with albums, now they're like two minute, um, throwaway songs, so to speak, you know?
But I always thought that the story is what sold the artist. The songs, don't really sell. So you could have a hot song and maybe it'll, you know, back in the day it would sell ringtones or it would sell, downloads right on iTunes or even, you know, way back in the days, CDs or cassettes, but that's it. Maybe get some airplane on the radio. Maybe now it gets on some TikTok videos, but it's, it's just a hot song. But how do you create a hot artist? How do you make people care about that artist, want them to keep coming back for more? I don't think you do it solely by dropping a hot song after a hot song. The songs are kinda disposable, right? You want longevity, and I think you get that by having people buy into the artist. And part of that is your story. They gotta care about you. They gotta know who you are, what makes you tick, why are you you? You know, Andre comes on here sometimes, my campaign manager, we have discussions on hip hop a lot. And he always brings up the backstory of the artist, and that is more important to him, it seems, than even the music, right? You, you might talk about a new song that came out and he'll start talking about where they grew up in Detroit or something like that. Like that, that means more to him. Who they grew up with, who were their friends, what did they do when they were younger? And I think a lot of people like that, even if it's not that, uh, obvious, I think a lot of people even subconsciously, put stock in, in artists or anyone's story, who they are, right? We wanna know who you are. The music is kinda secondary and, and, you know, not to make light of the music, of course, the music should be good. But in terms of getting the public to really buy into you, right, and care about you, I think they gotta, feel like they know you and a sense of who you are and where you came from.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's, it's part of like crafting that image and, uh, also when they know about you, they can kind of feel like they, they go with you through the journey, right? So, from wherever their introduction or whatever your backstory is to, to however you grow and navigate, going forward with your music releases or whatever it is, or your position, this and that, they kinda feel like they go with you, you know? And, and you know, we'd see a lot of that, uh, sometimes it's negative, you know, you'd see people like, especially in the underground space, like, what happened with the black IPs, like, they supported them then, and when they got to the pop era, like, oh, you switched, we don't follow you no more. So you don't, you know, but, I think that's, that's how you craft an artist or you, you get an artist to be more successful or to get, people to be those fans is if they can follow your journey or invest in who you are.
Yeah, yeah. And it's not just with an artist, I mean, this could even relate to, discussion we were talking about, right? Just you as a brand and someone who's trying to be out there in the world in whatever capacity.
Politicians, same thing.
Yeah, absolutely. Or even in your social life, right? I mean, anything, I think it's, it's about that. It's about, making people have a sense of what makes you tick and who you are. And then when I'm thinking about my music in particular, I'm thinking about how the story really needs to be told to sell these songs. I mean, for one thing, to provide context, right? Because where else would you hear someone rapping about being a lawyer and a politician, all these different things? You gotta know a little bit about who I am and you'll get a sense of that from the songs, but the story really, I think, drives that home. Who is this? What are we listening to? What is this about? And I think that makes it all interesting. If you know about that, it makes the whole thing interesting.
Right.
Unique. And, and you know, and it's not, it's not say, to say that I'm the only unique one, as what, what I'm doing is unique in this way. But I think everyone can do something that's unique in their own way. And it's about carving that lane for yourself based on who you are, right? That's why it's important to tell that story. What makes you different from everyone else? Because there's a million rappers out there, not just rappers. There might be a million people trying to get the job you're going for. I mean, you know what I mean? Whatever it is that you're doing, what makes you you? What makes you unique? Why should people care about you? That's the story you guys.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. So, so I think the bottom line here is that video submissions for jobs suck and, uh, music videos for rap songs could be dope.
Right, right. I'm gonna make some videos regardless of whether I get a call back on a second interview or not.
Right, right.
Making these videos.
Right, um, question in the chat, when does your album drop, Mike? Will we get signed autographs?
Who asked that question? Is that James?
No, uh, Lixah.
Okay, anything for you, Lixah. We don't have a date for the album yet. Like I was mentioning, I'm really so focused on completing, the project and the content that I haven't even really put that time in to actively think about. That I definitely, because it's getting to be the end of the year now, I definitely wanna have this all ready very soon so that I can start releasing. I'll probably start with one, two or three singles before the full album. And I definitely wanna start getting those out by the beginning of next year at the very latest.
Right. I haven't signed an autograph in mad long. Just thinking about that.
People kinda stopped caring about autographs. Now they want selfies.
Right, yeah. Yeah, so.
I do get that, but that's mostly from being in politics or just active in the community. Sometimes people come out, hey, I can have a selfie with you. That's always cool.
Right, so. Yeah, keep your eyes out for, the new Scholar album.
Yeah, yeah. The new single too. We'll start off with a single, kind of ease people into it. Build up that buzz, that anticipation. So, someone who didn't ease her way into the situation.
Oh, transition.
Yeah, I wanna get her name right here. She's a city councilwoman in Brooklyn. Her name is Ina Vernikoff. She was arrested, this past Friday on charges of criminal possession of a firearm, because she was photographed at a rally with a gun visible on her waist. Now, what's interesting about this, from a legal perspective at least, is she did have a license, right? And we talked about the Supreme Court gutting New York's previous gun law. And essentially saying, listen, if you have license to possess a gun, you should be able to carry it. And it allowed, it essentially forced New York to allow people to carry guns in public if they were, appropriately licensed to have them in the first place. Well, in response to what the Supreme Court did, New York went back to the drawing board, and passed new legislation saying, okay, the Supreme Court says we must allow people to carry guns if they have a license. Well, we are going to limit where you can carry a gun. And this is based on some language that was in that Supreme Court decision, alluding to this idea that there could be sensitive areas where guns would not be allowed. Now, how expansive can this be? That's still to be determined. It's being litigated, being fought over, but, as of now, there is a list of sensitive areas according to New York State where you were not allowed, to have a gun. Even if you have that permit, you're allowed to carry it in public generally. You can't go into these sensitive areas and a rally, a protest is one of them. In fact, I pulled up, the list here. It's a pretty big list. This is actually from, the New York State website. It's gun safety dot NY dot gov. And on their FAQ page, if you scroll down, you can see, a list of places. It says, any location owned or under control of federal, state or local government for the purpose of government administration, including courts. So that would be an important one, I think. And the list goes on. Places of worship or religious observation, libraries, public playgrounds, parks and zoos, preschool, summer camps. All these different state offices are listed here. Homeless shelters are on here. Colleges, universities, private schools, other educational institutions, public transportation and transit facilities, bars and restaurants serving alcohol and on premises cannabis consumption locations. Polling places, theaters, stadiums, racetracks, museums, amusement parks, performance venues, concert halls, gaming facilities, banquet halls. Okay, polling places, I said that, public sidewalks and other public areas that are restricted from general public access for a limited time or special event. Times Square, the entire Times Square, as determined by New York City. And this part here, which is the relevant portion, in this case, gatherings of people to collectively express their constitutional rights to assemble or protest. So.
So basically, you can carry your, your gun with a permit in your living room.
Although it is supposed to be for, public carrying, right? Because previously, if you had the permit, you could have it in your house. Regardless, this was about taking it out into the public, but it is very restrictive as you see it. And, you know, it is being contested, because there are some, obviously, who are saying that this is so restrictive, it's as if you can't carry in the first place. Of course, New York State didn't want to have to do this because New York State wanted to keep it, where you basically couldn't carry in public at all, right? But now their hands are tied, so they're trying to be as restrictive as possible here. And I understand why all of these things are on the list, right? But I also understand the perspective that, if I'm allowed per the Supreme Court constitutionally to carry a gun in public, why am I being restricted to, to, to carry it basically anywhere in the city, right? Because I'm gonna be traveling in a city and I'm almost inevitably going to be crossing into some of these zones that are considered, sensitive areas. Where I could be now, you know, I could be, uh, charged with a felony for taking my gun into these areas. That's exactly, what's being hap- what's hap- what's happening here. We're gonna see how this plays out. If she is convicted of a felony, she stands to lose her city council seat automatically. And there are calls, of course, for her to resign already. But we have to see what happens. I mean, it could be a plea bargain situation, maybe it gets knocked down to a misdemeanor. I don't know. I don't think we have a whole lot of experience as a city and as a state with this new framework, right? Cause you do have to start asking questions about, what they call mens rea in the law, or the type of mind state that someone has, the type of guilt, or the level of guilt that you can put on them. You know, I think in this case, it might be different from typical, I'm just walking around with my gun and stumbling upon an area situation. She, it looks like went to this rally knowing she was gonna carry a gun to the rally. And so, ignorance of the law is not an excuse. We, we hear that a lot, but, the mens rea is relevant to the extent of, what was her mind state here or, or anyone in this situation? What kind of criminal mind state is necessary? Are we gonna be charging people with felonies, for stumbling upon an area that's considered sensitive? What if you just walked through one and it was never your intention to go there? What if you didn't know that was a sensitive area? Again, ignorance of the law is not an excuse, but do you have the necessary criminal mind state? That should justify charging someone with a felony offense, because that is a serious offense. And now we are talking about people who do have licenses to carry their guns in public. And so, is it, I think, from a legal perspective and a constitutional perspective, a little tricky?
Right, yeah, and, and again, I, like I said, I agree with you. I, I understand why all of those places listed are on, on that list. But in, and I think in this case, it's, you know, she went there specifically. It wasn't like a case of she just meandered into a protest. Like, she specifically went to that protest, specifically brought her gun with her. So, I mean, I think that's, I mean, you can't, can't, obviously can't say she definitely went there for intimidation, but, it, it does look like you went there for intimidation.
Right? I mean, and to be fair, we don't know all of the facts, at least I don't, about how this all played out. Now, we know that this was a rally, for Palestine. And I guess she was there to counter protest, right? Again, she's a city council member from Brooklyn. We would want to know things like, how often does she carry that gun? How many other events did she go to that day? I mean, what if, as a city council member who was just pro-gun and maybe was making a political point, I don't know. But what if she had a habit of carrying her gun around everywhere she went? And what if she went to ten different events that day? One of them happened to be this protest. The others had nothing to do with protests. She just carries the gun around because she's a gun-toting council member. Would that change the analysis of whether she should be charged with a felony?
Right. Yeah, I mean, I, I could see there. I mean, although if the law says that you're not supposed to do it, you would expect the councilwoman to know that, or at least someone that's in her advisory circle, be like, hey, you, you can't do that.
That's a good point too, right? It's like the boxer who punches someone while they're, they should know that their fists are potentially deadly weapons. And so we hold them to a higher standard than the layperson. Here you're saying she's a city council member, so she should know what the law is more than the layperson.
Right, you know, um, and you can't expect, of course, you can't expect any, any politician or whatever to know every single law, but this is, one, it's not a, it's not a small law. Two, you know, she's going to have advisory people around her. I doubt she showed up by herself. I doubt when she was making the plan to go that she didn't talk to people around her who are also in this sphere of dealing with law and legislation. Someone you would expect would have mentioned something.
You would think, yeah, you would think.
This, this is just is it just play- playing into, you know, this conflict that's, that's taking place, you know, in, in the Middle East, Israel and Palestine? She was Jewish. Um, and this was in, what was it, a pro-Palestine rally? Um, she's very pro-Israel. And you know, there's a lot of tensions right now that, that's happening. And I mean, there always is, but even more now because of the, the recent flashpoints. And you know, it's, it's, uh, you know, we're going to see a lot of issues like this, I think.
Right. Now, from her perspective, she might say she's trying to defend herself. Maybe she her safety. Maybe it wasn't to intimidate or threaten other people. Maybe at least from her perspective, you know, maybe she would say, she would argue that she felt unsafe in that environment. But you know what? That's why people have bodyguards. I mean, there are ways to, to do it properly, right? Public officials do carry bodyguards or police details or whatever when they feel unsafe. And so it doesn't give you the authority to take the law in your own hands either.
Right. Well, see, here, here's the thing is like, that, that's she would be justified. I, I think anyone, um, she would be justified, especially right now in this hot button uh, flashpoint type of scenario, environment that we're in right now, for her showing up at that rally and that there'd be the possible of some sort of violent retaliation, right? I, I can understand that. Um, and that would be the same if it was a pro-Israel rally and someone was coming in and they were pro-Palestine. I can understand them feeling the same way as well. But the thing is, she has, she very much has the choice to not go at all. If you think going there is going to be dangerous, it's going to be potential for violence against you, then don't go. It wasn't your rally to begin with. Right? She showed up there with a gun, you know, with this, this gun on her hip, knowing even if, if she felt that there might have been something and she brought that for protection. Well, if you feel like there's going to be some bodily harm to you, that you need your gun, then don't go. So she had that choice. I think, again, I, we're, and we're seeing it, not just with this situation. We're seeing this with a lot of pro-gun um, folks, especially from the right. They're showing up to these political rallies or, you know, politicians' speeches or well, I don't know, they're going to like, uh, government buildings with their guns, saying, well, we have the right to do that. Like you're doing it for performative aspects of it, right? You're doing it for intimidation. You, you're not doing it because you're actually interested in whatever the debate is that's going on. You're doing it to
Things, right? It might not be intimidation. It might be performative. It might be a way to signal to her followers that, you know, look at me, I have the guts to show up to the other side's rally and I've, I got a gun because I'm pro-second amendment and I believe in that and I'm not going to back down. You know, it's that kind of thing. So I definitely see, it could be that. I'm not saying it definitely was in this case, but it could be. I do believe that this was the same city council member who was recently in the news because someone assaulted her while she was doing an interview. I believe she's the same one. She was doing an interview on TV or somewhere. She had a microphone and she was talking to a reporter or whatever. And someone walked by and I believe they forcibly kissed her on the cheek and then kept walking. And I know she made, if, if it is her, I, I guess I do believe it is her. It made a really big deal about it at the time. And I remember taking note because she was a Republican and she was talking about women's rights and all this type of stuff, which, you know, some might look at that as, as a level of hypocrisy, but I think she was doing it to try to get some of those points for herself because she knew that as a Republican, normally she doesn't get that kind of credit. So that aspect of it always kind of struck me that this was a Republican talking about how women are mistreated, right? But part of the story here could be, and again, I don't know, maybe since feeling unsafe following that incident, she started carrying a gun. That could right, that could have been the case too.
No, that's, that's very true. Um, I think that, that should be, to be looked at, uh, as well. Um, but uh, and you're right, I looked it up. That is, that was her. She was apparently doing something and some stranger came up and, and kissed her. Yeah, so I mean, that's, that's something to consider. Um, at the same time, you know, she is a councilwoman. She could come with people, she could come with guards. Um, and I'm not saying, don't show up um, at a protest or rally as a, a, a counter protest. I'm not saying don't do that, but you, you know what the law is in this regard and what you're risking or what you're potentially bringing into the situation. Even if you're not bringing it as intimidation or performative, you know that that's what, what's going to be the optics, especially if you're in politics, you should know how the optics are going to look on that. You know, I think we're just
Yeah, I would think that someone on that side politically might think that that actually helps them with their
Yeah, they probably do. To be fair, they probably do. Cause you're right. Cause then, you know, the pro, the really hardcore pro uh, gun advocates are going to be like, yeah, look what she did. Yeah. You know.
Right.
It's, and, and you know what? It's it's part of, you know, one of the things that I keep saying as far as in this gun debate and everyone's like, yeah, we have the right to, to, to bear arms and you can go here with your gun, you can carry and, and you're right, we do, but obviously our maturity level isn't such that we are able to you know, handle this, this freedom and this responsibility. Cause look at what's, what's happening. You know, we're not, we're not there yet. We were, were not mature enough to handle it. Clearly.
You know, it's funny too, looking at this list of sensitive areas and in particular gatherings of people to collectively express their constitutional rights to assemble or protest. In theory, because a protest could break out at any point, right? An assembly can break out at any point. In theory, could you basically force someone to be committing a felony if they're carrying their gun around you and you say, all right, everyone, let's, let's, let's protest right now. And they're in our space and so they got to leave, otherwise they're committing a felony.
A protest flash mob?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess you could.
Yeah, because not, not to be funny about it, it's, it's just that it's a kind of a vague term of protest, right? Protest could be anything and it could break out anytime. What if, I don't know, but okay, what if there's an incident, what if, what if a police officer and you have five witnesses and they, they say, hey, you know, this officer is mistreating this person and they're protesting and they're taking their cameras out or they, they start a chant or whatever. Now you have a protest that just formed. The person standing next to them with the gun, are they suddenly committing a felony?
Well, I think, I mean, in some of these types of, um, questions, you would, you would hope, you would hope that the, the legal system, the judges would look at this type of situation, be like, yeah, well, they didn't go there with the intent. They were there and it happened while they were there. That doesn't apply. You would, you would hope that that would be how they were figuring.
Right. And I think that speaks to this idea of ignorance is not an excuse. You hear that a lot. It's, but it's ignorance of the situation versus ignorance of the law, right? It's not an excuse to say, well, I didn't know that that was a felony to bring a gun to a protest. But, you know, if you don't know what's really going on, then you might not have the requisite mental state required to be found guilty of that crime, right? So it's not that you didn't know what the law was necessarily, it's that you didn't know that this constituted an assembly and you weren't allowed to be here because you didn't consider it an assembly when you, when you walked there or, you know, or, or whatever. May- maybe for example, you walked by, uh, a school, but you didn't realize that that was a school at the time. And, and then when you realized it, you left. That's the type of thing I think that is relevant to your mind state. And I think you can use to a certain degree your ignorance as a defense. In, in, right? And in that situation, not so much, I just didn't know that that was a law.
Yeah, I mean, for example, uh, I was, um, I was in Osaka with a friend and we were just walking uh, through the streets, um, you know, and it was a just a regular weekend day and just out, you know, walking around um, in downtown Osaka and walked into a, a protest. You know, they were, they were marching on the street. They were, you know, because they were protesting some change to the constitution and we didn't know a protest was going on that day. We hadn't intended on going there. We just basically turned a corner and here was this protest with the streets were blocked off and people just wa- you know, walking past us. Um, protesting with signs and everything like that. Like, had that been this type of situation, I guess technically, we would have been, uh, committing a felony if we had guns on us.
Right, if you had guns on you.
Don't have that issue here in Japan.
Right, right. And I think a lot of this really is to discourage people. Let's be honest, from walking around with guns.
Sure. And, and, and I am completely for that. I don't think we want the streets to be like the image that we get in the movies of the Old West where everyone's walking around with guns on their hips. Cause you know, one, it's it's definitely less safe. Uh, and two, I don't think we have the maturity level to to handle that responsibility properly. I just don't. Our society just doesn't have it.
Could you imagine someone walking with the gun? And of course, they think they're badass because I got the gun. But now they're scared because they're stumbling upon these sensitive areas, right? They're walking down the street like, yeah, I'm a gun, I can go wherever with my gun. Who's going to bother me? And then a protest breaks out and they turn around, they, they start running while you're running, because I got a gun, I can't be here. It was kind of funny.
Right? It's, it's, you know, I think the, the issue, you know, we're, we're looking at a completely, a, a, a foundational issue that needs to be somehow addressed and fixed. That people feel the need to be out in public with their gun everywhere or in certain scenarios that you feel like you have to have it, you know? Ten, fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, that wasn't the case. You know, people did go to counter protests. People did go to rallies. People did go out to, to Starbucks and it just wasn't the need to, to show everyone that I've got my gun or I have a permit for. You know, like there's like, uh, something that needs to be addressed that speaks to that where people feel the more need to go out and do that.
But it's also a philosophical thing, right? Because some people think that that's the best way to protect yourself. And some people have faith in law enforcement or they think it's, you know, it's, it'll take too long for them to come or whatever.
I agree.
They've got to take matters into their own hands. And so when you see crime up or you hear about more incidents of crimes, especially on public transit in certain areas, then there are people who have that philosophy already, who say to themselves, I need to be carrying, otherwise I'm not going to even go out or I'm going to avoid all these places. Right?
Right.
So there's that philosophical divide, I think. Some people are just going to think that's the best way to protect yourself. Others don't see it that way. And even if crime, let's say, is up, they don't think the solution is, we all need to be carrying guns. I think there's a certain type of person who believes that. And, and you see, that said, right, that talking point repeated, the only thing that could stop a bad guy with a gun is a good guy with a gun. And they think that the solution is for more people to be armed. And especially in New York City, I don't think that's the prevailing view.
No. And, and, and it shouldn't be. It, it, it doesn't work. You know, I mean, you, some people are going to be deterred, yes, but there's also at the same time, there're going to be some people going to feel emboldened because now they've got that gun on their, on their hip, you know, whereas you know, they might not have acted a certain way before. But now they've got a gun, so now they're going to feel a little bit more brash because they've got this on their head.
Right. And I just thought of something. We got to do this because we, we're going to run out of time soon, but maybe next week or on a future episode, we can look at this, the state of origin database. Remember they passed, we advocated for that to be passed and it was passed, but in the law, I think it was quarterly, they required these stats to be posted online. So we got to get our hands on these stats. We got to make sure that they are posted and start to go through them because we want to see that these guns are not coming from New York. That was a big part of the discussion, right? That gun laws do matter because guns used in crimes here originate for the most part in states where it's easy to get them.
Right.
And the laws are not strict.
Right. Well, she's, uh, she's about to, to, to find out what's going to happen here, you know, because um, she could, but I guess, what was it? They said that she could lose her council seat or will lose her council.
If she is convicted of a felony, we have to see what happens with that. And I guess that is going to be our poll question of the week. So the question of the week is, do you believe that the New York City council member who brought a gun to a protest should lose her seat on the city council?
Yeah, we'll see what people have to say about that.
Yeah, and I kind of want to take the politics out of it in terms of are you pro-Israel, pro-Palestine? How do you feel about this protest? I want to know what people think about the idea of bringing a gun to a protest, regardless of what the protest was about, right? Let's make it more about carrying a gun to the protest, which is considered by law now a sensitive area, which could give you criminal liability.
Right. Yeah, so we'll see what, what people have to say. And speaking of that, we do have our poll question from last week.
Okay.
Um, and this was in regards to Mayor Adams and his Latin America tour. He did a four-day tour, um, through um, Mexico, Ecuador, Colombia, and the Darien Gap. And basically, basically, well, said that he was going to see what was, conditions were like there that were causing people to come here, but also to let people know basically that, uh, hey, New York's full, man. Uh, but also to clarify to them, uh, I think he did mention that he thinks people were being misled to think that when they got to the states that there's going to be, you know, accommodations and jobs waiting for them where that's just not the case. And so as it was billed, as he was, uh, going there to dissuade people from trying to make that long and treacherous journey uh, to the States. And so the question was, do you agree with Mayor Adams' effort to reach out to Latin American countries and encourage their residents not to migrate to the US? So results were forty percent yes, forty-seven percent no, and fif- thirteen percent, I'm not sure. Were the results on there.
So no majority, just a plurality of people saying no, but pretty close.
Right. And you know, what was what was more kind of unique about this situation is that he, I mean, even though New York is one of the biggest cities on the planet, one of the most populated cities on the planet, he is still a city mayor. He's not a, 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 a national politician. He's still just a local city mayor.
Right. And on that point, Jay, I want to remind folks that New York City mayors and former mayors have run for a higher office, including president many times over the years. And nobody has ever made it past the office of New York City mayor. No one has ever made it to higher office beyond that. So they always aspire to it. They always think, oh, I'm mayor of New York City, I'm going to be president, governor, whatever. And they always lose when they try. And so uh, as of now, New York City mayor is a dead-end job.
I mean, and, and the thing is, I think we do lose sight of the fact that you know, he is a mayor. Um, or that that position is a mayor position because it's such a high-profile position because of the city itself, right? But he's still a local official, basically. Right. Um, and going on an international uh, type of tour like this is something that's not common for local mayors to do. So we had some com- we had some comments as well, but the comments were all were all in the negative, right? Uh, one said, absolutely not. Um, he's a mayor of a US city and no way represents the federal government. Uh, he has no right to conduct foreign policy on behalf of the US, just like Tom Cotton had no right to send the Iranian government a letter contradicting their deal with the US.
Here's the thing, though, I understand that perspective. The New York City Council will frequently pass resolutions on matters of foreign policy, for example. They're not enacting official policy. They know that they're bound by the city charter and the state constitution. And they're a municipal body, but they can speak on other issues. And that's really, I think, the distinction. You're not making policy, but if you have that position, you are allowed to go on record and speak on it. Use your position to influence what goes on. Maybe part of that is lobbying, as we talked about. Other governments, state and federal government, maybe part of it is doing fact-finding overseas, I don't know. Again, I understand the perspective, that's kind of outside their role, but I think we do need to draw the, the distinction between speaking on something. And actually trying to enact policy or law that's beyond your jurisdiction.
Right, now, to be, to be fair, and I think we, we did kind of bring up some points when we talked about this, is that. Um, you know, it looks like he's in a tough position, right? Because, you know, there are, at this point, o- over a hundred twenty thousand migrants have come to New York in the past year. You know, we're talking sometimes upward of, of a thousand a day. Um, he did, you know, there, um, space is an issue, budget is an issue. He did attempt to reach out to Governor Hokel to, for help in, uh, getting other areas of New York involved. To, to be able to provide for people coming there. He did try to get some help from the federal government. And he was, uh, criticized by the, the administration, saying that he doesn't have an exit strategy for how to deal with migrants when they leave. Um, shelters. So, it would seem, he did attempt to go the chain of command, so to speak. Um, so, you know, they, neither of them refused to help. That doesn't change the fact that he still has to deal with the migrants in the city and millions of residents in the city, and something has to be done. So, even this is an unorthodox approach. I could understand, uh, this idea to take a proactive step in this regard.
Right, you know, and we just talked about the councilwoman in Brooklyn doing something that may seem performative. This might be performative on the mayor's part.
It could, it could be performative. I mean, he, you know, he doesn't really have the authority to do, you know, foreign policy in that regard. Um, and. But it could be, again, it could be performative, um, because, you know, the, the federal government is gonna be looking at that. And it's gonna raise some eyebrows, I'm sure, um, and put some, maybe some calls are gonna go, go through, like, what the heck is this guy doing? Uh, type of thing, same with Hokel, so it could be in that regard as well.
Right, and actually it could end up being a positive thing, right? Even if it has that performative aspect, if it inspires action from those who can enact change the policy.
Right. So, you know, that was, um, the comments mostly said, no, this is another one. No, this is not the right action, he should stay home and try to do something to solve the problem. Um, which, I mean, he has attempted to, um. They, the, the comment mentioned that he should try to, uh, deal with the price gouging hotels. Um. There are, s- there was a Bloomberg article that this person attached to their comment. Showing that New York City pays over three hundred dollars a night for budget hotel rooms for migrants. So it seems hotels are gouging the city on allowing migrants to stay here. When they typically would charge like a hundred ten dollars a night, they're charging this, the city three hundred dollars a night.
Well, the city is paying it. You know, I've dealt with hotels who. Preferred from a strictly financial standpoint to rent out their rooms to homeless folks. Because the city would pay them so much more money than other customers would. And so it didn't make any financial sense for them. And you go to some hotels, you know, the hotels all by JFK Airport, there are so many of them, right? And you think, oh, wow, there, there's no shortage of hotels here. A lot of them, though, if you go into them, never have any vacancies for people. They're exclusively used to house homeless people because the city pays them so much money to put them up.
Yeah, and that's, you know, I, I agree with this person, it's a price gouging type of situation. Um, you know, why, why does it cost three hundred dollars for a migrant there versus the hundred ten that someone else? Now, I know it's, it's, you look at and say, well, the market, three hundred, you know, people, the average traveler, tourists are not gonna pay you three hundred dollars for your budget hotel. Um, and.
That's what they're gonna give them. I don't think it's being demanded of them. Maybe now it's gotten to a point where the hotels can demand it because it's what they're used to. But my understanding of the situation was, the city basically said, we are in a desperate situation here. We will give you all this extra money if you'll let us use your rooms.
Right. Well, that's an issue there, I think, um. Then we have, uh, another comment said, uh, were asked about which Latin countries. And the, I mentioned which ones it were, the Mexican, uh, Mexico, Ecuador, Colombia and Darien Gap. And this person said, oh, so he just went to the nicest places except for the gap. I wonder if he knows that Mexican immigration to the US is negative. These are not places exporting people.
It was negative. I think we talked about that. I believe for the past several years, it's been positive again. But it is a fair point. I think there are some places he just wouldn't be welcome. I mean, now he's not gonna be walking through Venezuela, right?
Right, and that's what this person said. I'd like to see him visit Nicaragua, Honduras and Venezuela to see for himself. So it's like, it's like the tourist who visits New York City and says, I've seen America. I bet he knows little or nothing.
Yeah, or Times Square for that matter. Hey, with, people come to New York City and they stay in Times Square and they think they've seen New York City. They think they've seen, like, what my experience is living here, for example, or anyone else. They think that's typical of New York City.
Right, right. So. So, um, yeah, so, uh, interesting poll question, um. Interesting situation, you know.
Yeah, yeah. You know, and I guess whether we agree or disagree with all of the mayor's methods. We should commend him on trying to do something, on at least speaking out on it, right? On, on not shutting up, not giving up the fight, you know, some people. Will argue it, it's been effective, it hasn't been effective, but we do see him out there trying to address the issue.
No, I, I agree. I, I'm not a, I'm not generally a fan of, of. Of him and with some of the things that he does, but, um, I do. I, I do feel him on this issue and I think he's trying to do something. You know, I do believe that he's actually trying to, uh, make a positive resolution on this and he's, his back is against the wall. Yeah, so, you know, he's kind of in a situation where it's, you know. Damned if he does, do, damned if he don't, you know, um. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's tough.
Yeah, no, it definitely is tough. That's why I'm envious of him this year, or really anyone in office. It's, it's a very difficult year, I think.
Yeah, absolutely, you know. Because again, you know, regardless of whoever's answers or what, or whatever the politics are around it. Or, you know, you can say the, the countries he went to aren't the right countries. So you can address how Mexico treats migrants coming through their southern border the same way we treat them coming through our southern border. Um, you can say all kinds of things, but the fact is, he's still responsible for the millions of residents in New York City. And the hundreds of thousands of, uh, migrants that have come in and trying to find a way to make that situation work day to day. That, everything else falls to the wayside because that's still there.
Right, right. Well, with that said, I think we're about at our, our mark, are we not?
Um, we could be. Oh, snap, are we, are we running it on, we are kind of probably on time this time. Check that out.
Well, we could go to the bottom line then. I'll take that to you this time.
Is it on me?
Yeah.
You know what? I think the bottom line here is that we need to. Uh, kind of chill out a little bit. Um, I think a lot of things that are happening, that's going on today is a lot of performative. Uh, measures on a variety of different topics and subjects. And all that's going to do is to keep pushing, um, things further into the extremes, right? Um, showing up to, to rallies with, with guns on your hips. Um, and, uh, saying certain statements to, to rally people that are in your base. Even if you truly believe it or you don't believe it, like, it's, it's all very performative and. It doesn't address what's really happening or provide solutions for it. So I think we should dial back this type of nature and actually work to do something that's going to actually be effective and beneficial.
Yeah, yeah, and stop sending cover letters.
Um, yeah, we can stop sending cover letters, um, and don't ask for video submissions, you know. I think it's performative also.
Right.
Ridiculous.
Right, right.
So.
Let's get to what we're here to do. Like we said, we've got work to do, right? But before we log off, you can catch us on Instagram, at Nuanced Show. We're on YouTube, at Nuanced Show, you can go watch the replays over there. We are approaching a hundred thousand views on the YouTube channel and so we'll. Do something when that happens, maybe celebrate some of our loyal listeners and viewers. We are of course available wherever podcasts can be found, so you subscribe, you get those podcasts in audio form delivered. Directly to your devices. As always, like, subscribe, share, engage with us. We appreciate all of you guys for tuning in and joining us each and every week. As always, these are interesting discussions. We do have work to do and we will catch you next time.